We will call the August Public Safety and Transportation Committee meeting to order. Be looking for a motion to approve today's agenda. Moved by Bear, supported by Walls. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed, passes unanimously, takes us to the first opportunity for public comment. Is there any public comment? Any public comment? Last chance for public comment. Seeing none, public comment is closed. Takes us to item four A, the approval of last month's meeting minutes. Be looking for a motion to approve those minutes. Moved by Bear, supported by Walls. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. All opposed, passes unanimously. Takes us to item B, the prosecutor's quarterly report. Ms. Gersni is here. Good morning.
Good morning. Happy Monday. All right, so just some things to highlight for the PowerPoint that we submitted. On slide two, everybody will notice mostly those warrants requested reviewed. So, right, those 2024 numbers are all of 2024. Here we are halfway through, just over halfway through 2025, where almost 1,000 more warrant reviews than we were in all of 2024. I'm still trying to piece together what might be the cause of that. I do think in part it's because when I took over in January, we had a backlog. And so getting through that backlog, I think, would account for some of this. You know, it used to take us probably close to two to three weeks to get a response on a warrant review and an answer back to law enforcement. We're mostly doing it within a week now. So we've really been able to quicken that pace up, and in particular, our community appreciates that. They get answers back sooner. So some of that is accounted for that, but I don't think all, close to 1,000, are accounted for backlog. And so I'm not overly sure of what the rest of that accounts for. And I am, you know, going to be paying attention to next year's numbers as well to see if this is a trend, if this is, you know, what's going on with my limited information. But that kind of stands out to me for sure. And in particular, also, our warrants denied has dropped a bunch as well. You know, and I do think in part that our law enforcement, we've done some additional trainings with them in the last six, eight months. And I think that we're having some better communication going on between us and law enforcement. And so I think they are able to reach out ahead of time, ask some questions, put together some better cases for us. But, you know, those warrants denied numbers are obviously much, much lower, even though our warrant requests are much higher. Does anybody have any questions about that before kind of I move on? There are just some staggering numbers in there for us, so. In terms of, in slide six and seven, we kind of talked about some major cases that happened throughout the first six months of the year. To highlight as well, we have an abuse neglect trial that starts today that we were asked to take on, though we don't represent abuse neglect, but it involves an actual CPS worker. And so they've conflicted out of it, so they asked us to handle it. And because we're going to handle the criminal case of it, it made some sense for us to handle the abuse neglect. So that trial starts today for the abuse neglect side. And then we'll start a capital CSC trial tomorrow morning as well. So we're actually going to have two different juries in this week. You know, Sierra loves when we do that to them. And picking two different jury trials this week. So, you know, the summer tends to slow down a little bit for us for trial-wise, mostly because experts are gone, police officers on vacation, everybody takes time off in the summer, obviously. Our judges take some time off. But we're going to kick back up. And as we show on slide eight, for the entire months of August, September, and October, we have at least one felony jury trial set in every single circuit court courtroom. So we anticipate being pretty busy. I think even as of this, as currently being scheduled in November, I think in two of the courtrooms I was scheduling this weekend to January. So we are pushed out pretty far when it comes to those jury trials. Kind of the last thing I want to highlight for everybody is, on to slide 11, which is our victim rights numbers and how many things that they've, letters and different cases they're involved with. And their numbers are also astronomically higher in comparison to what they've been in the past. When I was kind of doing some presentations for some, for a previous one, over 500 more letters sent this year than they have had in past years. And those letters are those that are a victim in a crime. They get a letter automatically sent that says, here are your victim rights, these are the things that are your opportunities to. And we are up a lot on our victim cases as well. So when we look at those warrants reviewed, they're not just cases, but they are victim cases which trigger more different parts in our office that have to kind of interact and work with them. We also, with our new CarpeL system, which is where we'll talk about on slide 12, it's been a little bit of a learning curve. It's a really, really great program. I can't tell you how much we appreciate, how much we can adapt it and make it work for us. But victim rights in particular has had some issues with it. And they did not work out a lot of those bugs before they sent it to us in terms of the victim rights side. Attorney's side has been really easygoing, but the victim rights has had a lot more issues. So, but that Tyler leap, that last thing there, we are super close to being able to launch that, which is a really nice thing for law enforcement in that right now they're having to double enter all their warrant requests. They have to put it into their system and they have to put it into our system. This will integrate the two, so once they put it into their system, it automatically comes into our system. And we've been testing it with some test cases with the city, the county, and Blackman kind of throughout the last month and a half, six weeks, to make sure everybody's got all the bugs out before we bring it live. So they're excited for that piece of it. And it'll help them for sure. So those are kind of the only things I was going to highlight, unless anybody has any questions or anything for me.
Committee members, any questions? Thank you very much for your report.
You're welcome.
Have a great day. Be looking for a motion to receive the report. Moved by Williams, supported by Bear. All in favor say aye. All opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you. Takes us to item C, public defender quarterly report. And Mr. Rogers is here. Good morning as well.
Good morning. I'm Kevin Rogers. I'm the relatively newly appointed chief public defender for Jackson County. I have sent the quarterly report to the board. I would be receptive to any questions you have about the report. I did prepare some additional comments that didn't appear in the report, just about general office operations that I'd like to make though as well. Okay. So we've done some things in the community lately to reach out to people. We reached out to two attorneys in our community, Michael Duncan and Al Brant. And they came into our office and did a training on things commonly one might encounter as a defense attorney, working with people from the community who've been arrested essentially from a traffic stop perspective. It was a traffic stop that evolved into a search, or a seizure, or DUI, an OWI, something like that. So they came in and they gave us two to three hours of their time. They each prepared some excellent materials for us. And it gave us a chance to learn from people who have, you know, a combined 50-plus years of experience in the field, working with our courts specifically, and with people that have found themselves in those circumstances generally. It was a really productive training. Our office was very receptive to the way that they taught and to the way that they presented the material. I think that probably it gave the foundation for some of our younger attorneys to reach out for some mentorship from established attorneys, importantly, in our community. And I think that gives our office, you know, a better feel for what it's like to have the boots on the ground here when they're talking to people who have had their boots on this ground for a really long time and serve this community very well. Other attorneys have expressed an interest in doing similar things, so we plan on scheduling more of those in the future. The other thing that I have is, we have a social worker. And I guess that's kind of our companion, maybe it parallels the victims' rights unit that the prosecutors have, for perspective. So she prepared just a brief bullet point of her success stories, and she wanted me to share that with you guys. A 60-year-old person lost his Section 8 voucher during a court case. So this was going to create some criminal circumstances that have liability, and then this person was going to be homeless. She, for her knowledge and training in helping people connect to resources, she connected that person with the right people to, you know, resuscitate and save the Section 8 voucher. So we, you know, thwarted a case of homelessness in addition to the complication and the obligations that this person is going to have to serve our community for their criminal conviction. Another one of those was a veteran whose housing was unstable. She connected that individual with resources for veterans in our community. And that person was able to then maintain his housing and get through his criminal case. She does stuff like that a lot. A domestic violence case, from our perspective, she helped that person with two young children coordinate care and find the resources to keep her family stable during that crisis that she had going on. What she does on a day-to-day basis is oftentimes what's called mitigation. So she'll help us prepare information for the court that gives background to the person either accused of the crime or convicted of the crime, so that the court can then tailor a sentence and individualize it for the person who's been convicted. Yeah, and obviously addiction is a big thing in the community and in the nation generally, and she's really instrumental in connecting our people that we serve as clients to the resources that they need in the community to try to get well and, you know, get out from under that. So, her name is Lindsay Battle. If anybody wants to reach out to her, talk to her, if you have anything that you'd like to ask specific to her functions there, I'm sure she'd be happy to take a call. But that is all. I just respectfully ask that you accept the report as submitted, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Committee members, any questions? I'd have a question particularly on that last report. The individual that lost their Section 8 status, was that due to the criminal conviction that they received or other circumstances?
Well, her, I can follow up with you on that, but I believe it says lost Section 8 voucher during the court case. So it could have been because incarceration caused that person to not be present in the home, and that could have made it slip away. There are some things that are per se violations of that federal code that say, you know, if you are convicted of X, Y, or Z, you don't get that voucher. And respectfully to Ms. Battle, there's nothing she could do to get it back.
Yeah, I'm just speculating, but you know, like if a person was running a drug operation or sex trafficking out of their home and lost their Section 8, I would hope we wouldn't spend public resources to get that individual back into it. Hopefully that's not the case. I doubt it is.
There are very bright line rules within the Section 8 federal housing code that say what can and can't be a per se removal and loss of that voucher.
But since she highlighted it, I'd appreciate it if you'd update us what the details of it.
I will.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for the report. Is there any, no questions? So I'd be looking for a motion to receive the report. Moved by Bear, supported by Williams. All in favor say aye. All opposed, passed unanimously. Thanks, have a great day.
Thank you.
Takes us to item D, District Court Courthouse Security Grant, rooftop door replacement. Mr. Burns, good morning.
Good morning. Before you, a request for approval to replace the rooftop doors on the courthouse. Some of those doors, it's very possible that they were original to the building. As we were looking with the security grant that we have, opportunities, facilities brought this to our attention with a request to have these replaced. And before you are the two quotes that we received back from the three contractors that facilities reached out and would ask that you would approve going with the local contractor, Mercer, for replacement of that, and the low quote for the replacement of those roof doors.
Committee members, are there any questions? Commissioner Bear.
Thank you. Good morning, Jeremy.
Good morning.
First question from your cover letter analysis B, financial, $26,424 quote, $15,000 contingency. We have information presented by the contractors to authorize the $26,000. Contingencies are good, they should be in there. But this is not the contractor's money automatically. He doesn't get that other 15% unless there's a change in conditions, change in the contract, change in the scope.
Agreed. That's our 15% for if it's, if there is structural components that need to happen. Any of the previous, the contractor is getting the $26,000 unless there's a work change order or anything like that. But if there is foundation that needs to be changed that we don't know until we get in there, that is what that component is, so that I have that leeway, if you will, that contingency for that. Fully agree, the contract is what the contract is for Mercer, but for the project, as I brought to you many other times, and this is the request from facilities and the request from, that we have that to just cover our bases with that.
Yes. You have shared all the information with us about the base contract.
Yep.
If unforeseen conditions come up and the contingency or part of it is used, will you come back and let us know what those conditions are?
That typically has not been the practice in the past. I've not needed to come before you for any of those other things because we've fell within that. But that was, that's the purpose of this request to additionally include the 15%. Because sometimes if we're in the middle of it, and if I need to stop to say and then wait for the next board meeting to come before you, we're stuck.
No, I wasn't expecting you to stop work and come. I wasn't expecting you to stop work and come get requests for the change order. I'm just asking, will you, when the project's done, will you report to us how many change orders were made and what were they, and why were they made?
Derek, if you would talk in the microphone.
Commissioner Bear. We would still do the same process as usual, as far as reporting to the administration weekly. And as any things come up during these projects and any type of construction, I agree with Jeremy and the fact of all the contingencies that we ask for ever going with any project is we do it upfront because of the can of worms clause, I like to say, is we don't know. So if some bricks fall out during construction, we're going to fix it during that project and use that contingency. But I would report that to Mr. Overton and everybody would have the information.
Okay, I understand all that. I always put contingencies into every one of my contracts that I wrote. I was just looking for an update at the end of the project. How much of the contingency did you actually use? So then, while you're up there. Under motion required, talk about replace the courthouse rooftop doors. Doesn't say anything about door frames. The Jones estimate talks about replacing a three-by-seven door and frame. And then there's four existing door slabs, and it doesn't say anything about a frame. And the Mercer estimate under the existing door doesn't say what quantity. It doesn't say whether that includes a frame or not. And the fabricating install new doors, it doesn't state the quantity and doesn't state whether there's a door frame. So are you sure that you're comparing apples to apples? And are you getting frames with these doors?
We are not getting frames with these doors. They're actually, it's going to be a custom-built, hinged, continuous hinge slab doors, and helps the county save some money. These are, as Jeremy said, the original Ewok kind of small doors. There's nothing normal about these as far as today's standards. They are safe as far as egress and the openings are fine, but if you, if we go into that door frame, or the steel that's basically embedded in all the brick, we're going to have big problems. So we're going to blow past that contingency and have a whole nother can of worms and problems. So what we were doing is just custom to what that door opening is right now, and the four corners especially. We're not going to touch the steel, we're not going to touch the brick. We're going to take the door slab off, and we're going to do a continuous hinge and custom fit this door, new doors, to this frame. So all is well.
Okay. I was just asking, because one contractor mentions frames and the other one doesn't.
And I was cautious with that option.
Almost at Commissioner Bear. That's it? Okay, wonderful. Commissioner Williams, did you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I have just maybe one or two questions. And if you're repeating yourself, I do apologize, but I just want to make sure that we do have this on the record. So as we went through the document you sent over over the weekend, again, this is a grant. We're paying with this via grant, correct?
So I will step in for that. So yes, this is the security grant that the courthouse and district court has received, 100% covered by the grant, no matching funds, no funds whatsoever from the county.
Perfect, that's all I wanted, just to make sure we had that on the record. Thank you, Mr. Chair, nothing further.
Thank you. All right, committee members, if no other questions, I will remind you, this is an action item. It will not go before the full board due to the lower dollar amount. So I'd be looking for a motion of approval. Moved by Williams, supported by Bear. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'd ask you to please post the vote. Madam Clerk.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Have a great day.
Have a great day. Takes us to item E, the 911 Motorola Agreement Lease Renewal. And Jason Hammond, good morning.
Good morning, everybody. So before you have the Motorola agreement, this is something we've been doing every year due to Motorola's multi-year contracts, has a couple clauses in it that the attorneys, our attorneys wish to have out, but Motorola's will not remove them. So we went through a single-year contract with them last year, and we're doing it the same this year as well. This has been budgeted in the 2025 and 2026 budget. Increase is the $1,184 from last year.
Thank you. Committee members, any questions? If not, I'd be looking for a motion to forward to the full board with recommendation of approval. Moved by Bear, supported by Walls. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. All opposed, passes unanimously. Takes us to item F, request for a new full-time position Assistant Director at 911.
Thank you. The motion is being requested to authorize additional deputy director position for central dispatch. Some of the background, May 3, 2016, the voters increased the surcharge to $1.50. In 2016, the Board of Commissioners approved the hiring of four shift leaders. On December 8, 2018, administrative oversight for 911 was transferred to the county administration's office. The shift leaders or supervisors that were hired are under the same contract as the dispatchers. So they're under the same CBA. Obviously dispatch is 24/7 operation, requires management assistance on a regular basis during second shift weekends. All right, and then the current situation, a succession plan for central dispatch identifies the creation of a deputy director position to assist in the daily operations, ensure the constant leadership during emergencies, absences, and support a continuity during transitions. And after hours responsibilities with the director. This has been a longstanding discussion about the need for a second in-command position to support the organization's stability and succession plan. The director is regularly contacted at all hours of the days and nights, weekends, during vacations, PTL, IT-related stuff, emergency-related issues. The pole's deputy director position has been included in the 2026 budget and submitted for review. Dispatch is 24/7 operation and requires management assistance. Basically, the deputy director is essential to assist the following, support technology, system management, maintenance, software, help ensure compliance with local, state, and federal guidelines, ensure seamlessly operations during the director's absence or emergencies.
Hey, Jason.
Yes, sir.
I think you can pause and they could ask if there's any questions or anything.
Committee members, are there any questions? Commissioner Walls.
Good morning, Jason.
Good morning.
I am curious, do we have someone that's trained well enough that could possibly move into that position if they so applied? Or would we need to look outside of the current workforce to find that applicant?
I've been sending a couple people to different trainings for I've been sending a couple people to different trainings for management responsibilities, so there is a couple that would have, but I would still like to see outside, too.
Thank you.
Commissioner Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My first question was the same. My second question is, just in terms of funding, is this coming from your budget?
This would be for the 2026 budget year that we placed in there for review, yes.
General fund, okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Bear?
Thank you. Last year, when we reviewed the budget in September, we had to make some cuts because we didn't have enough funding for everything. We haven't seen the budget for the upcoming budget. So I see this position as being necessary. I'm not against this position. I'm just against considering this before we even know what the budget is, to know if we can afford this. So I would move that we postpone consideration of the new Assistant Director position until after the budget has been approved.
Question to the motion. Boy, I guess it needs a second.
There's no second right now.
Chair, did I go slow enough? Did you get that motion? Sorry, didn't have it right in.
You could say it again, Tony, if you'd like. You could say it again if you'd like.
Repeat it? I move that consideration of the Assistant Director position for central dispatch be postponed until after the next year's budget has been approved.
So Commissioner Bear, I would ask you to hold on with your motion because the administrator wanted to speak on this and that opportunity hasn't been given yet.
Hold on my motion? Motions can be made at any time.
You're correct.
There's no such thing as a hold.
You're correct, go ahead.
As a hold on a motion. Did the motion receive a second?
Motion fails for not having support.
Kind of expected that.
Question, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Williams?
So if I'm understanding correctly, although to Commissioner Bear's point, although that we're still moving forward with the budget, these numbers that they're asking for today have already been accounted for. So once we have the budget approved, those numbers will already be there.
So that's, this is why I wanted the administrator to speak on it before we started talking about motions. So I'm gonna let him handle that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yes, our intent is to bring forward new positions or things that are directly affecting the budget and have, do it now so the board has opportunity to consider it. If you approve this at the time of the budget, if for some reason the budget's not balanced or you felt uncomfortable with it, you could deny it in the budget and it wouldn't go forward. But to change and bring it after the budget, so we don't put it in a budget, you approve it, then I have to immediately come back with a request to change the budget, which Mr. Commissioner Bear has complained about in the past, that I should have done it before the budget. So this time, we're taking his heed and his advice, and we're bringing these things forward before the budget so that we can, you know, have consideration and include them in the budget as opposed to doing a budget adjustment afterward. But I can do it either way, guys.
Commissioner Williams?
Mr. Chair, if I am in order and if there's no further questions?
I have some questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. So was there any other questions from committee members? Okay. So in the past with other departments, when there's been a need for leadership, some have considered restructuring rather than just adding another position. Have you looked into that to where potentially you talked about two people that you've been sending to training seminars about potentially changing the requirements of that role and turning that person into an Assistant Director rather than adding an additional body and an additional expense of $117,000?
I think in the back end of it, knowing that we're already low staff as dispatchers and shift leaders, taking a shift leader away that could help out with a dispatcher, I think we'll be hurting ourselves more.
So you're, and you're of the opinion that that wouldn't be feasible in this case?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions, committee members? If none, I believe you were about to make a motion, is that correct, Mr. Commissioner Williams?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. If there's no further questions, I'll have a motion to accept.
Motion to accept? Or the recommended actions, approval of the proposed new full position to be forwarded to the full board?
Yes, sir. That's my motion.
All right, moved by Williams, is there support?
Support.
Supported by Walls. I'd ask for a roll call vote, please.
No.
Commissioner Walls?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner, Chairman Kennedy?
No. So this will...
You gonna give me my vote, sir?
Yes, sir. I know what it is, go ahead.
Chairman, Chairman Shotwell.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, so we'll see that Tuesday night. That takes us to item G.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Bear?
I'd like to make a request of our clerk. I know it's not always done, but.
My motion failed.
My motion that failed because of a lack of a second. I would like my motion to at least appear in the minutes, so it's a more accurate record that a motion was made and it failed.
That's against Robert's Rules.
So if you would add that, I would appreciate it.
Point of order, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Bear's motion is out of order at the time it was made, so it does not appear in the record. He may enter it if he chooses under Commissioner Comment at the end of the meeting where it would then thereby appear in the record.
Commissioner Bear?
My motion was not out of order. A motion can be made at any time by anybody. And if somebody's gonna claim my motion was out of order, I would like them to refer me to which page in Robert's Rules of Order did I violate when I made that motion?
I don't believe that you're out of order, it's that you lack support, so it doesn't appear in the, in the minutes due to Robert's Rule of Order. Chairman Shotwell has given you an avenue, should you choose to accept at the end of this meeting during Commissioner Comment, that it could. But it won't be in the official, under this agenda item.
I've always felt the official minutes were lacking documentation, so if the citizens read it, it's hard for citizens to understand, what was the discussion? What was the issue? It's just too bland, too abbreviated. It's accurate, but the value of it would be greatly increased if there was more information there.
Okay.
And it was in order. I mean, there's, somebody just can't, every time.
Say out of order.
No, it's not, not out of order, it's you didn't garner support for it, sir. Chairman Williams, or excuse me. Man. Commissioner Williams.
I'll withdraw at this time, Mr. Chair, nothing further.
Okay, so now we are moving on. Let me get my screen back here, we're having so much fun. We'll go to the 911 quarterly report.
Thank you, this is the quarterly report. I'll go through just some highlights. On the second page, we had a total of 162 folias by using the QA software. That's very helpful. Also about another 244 from prosecutors, law enforcement agencies, things of that nature. The HVA interface, just to let everybody know, we will be going live with that September 7th. There are just a few issues that they are having, which is creating two calls when we send them information, but they're gonna do a workaround, but we are going live September 7th. We will be doing some live testing on the production side, just to make sure the dispatchers on both ends understand how it works this week. Also doing the CAD to CAD talks right now with Hillsdale County. Get the CAD to CAD going with them as well as we do with Lenawee County. Our new recorder that you guys approved last meeting is getting installed August 12th and 13th, that was the server. And the State 911 compliance review completed, we had no discrepancies in 911. The next page, it's just some of the busiest hours that we've had. Giving you guys some new graphs. And then the next page after that, these are all the carriers that we utilize here in Jackson County. There's a lot more than just those, but those are the carriers, different ones we use that call into 911. And the next page after that is the average duration of each call, so I put the 911 in our admin lines, so our 911 non-emergency lines. You see, actually every month so far, the admin lines have been more time than the other ones for the 911 line. So the next page is just another plotted calls. I just picked a certain part of Jackson County and plotted down there, this is over by Myers on the airport road. And the next page, please. So this is just the average abandoned per day, which is calls that we have to call back because we wasn't able to answer them, or there are some other issues on their end which they wasn't able to speak. Any questions on that?
Committee members, any questions? Is that the report?
There's a couple more pages, there's a couple of calls, inbound calls. The next page is the top 10 calls this year, just in 2024, 2025. And the last page is the call for service for each department that we utilize here in Jackson County and outside Jackson County for 2024, 2025 season, year.
Motion to receive the report.
Moved by Williams. I will support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passes unanimously. Have a good day, Jason, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Takes us to item H, Jackson County Department of Transportation, Michigan Department of Transportation Agreement 25-5327, Spring Arbor Road at Robinson Road. Morning, Angela.
Good morning. So this is our MDOT contract for the modernization of Spring Arbor and Robinson Road signal. The project's $150,230, $135,207 is grant, and then $15,023 is JC dot local match that comes out of our MTF.
Committee members, any questions? If none, be looking for a motion to forward to the full board with recommendation of approval. Moved by Bear.
Support.
Supported by Walls. Any questions, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passes unanimously. Takes us to item I, Jackson County Department of Transportation License Agreement, private utility at 66 Feller Drive, Columbia Township.
So this is another citizen that has issues and owns property on both sides of a road, so they've applied for a right-of-way permit to be able to install the private utility under the road to the other adjacent property of theirs. We've had a few of these asking for approval.
Any questions, committee members? Commissioner Bear?
Good morning, Angie.
Good morning.
This is two different parcels that are now gonna be linked by a proper, a private utility. Can, how does this affect the sale of either or both of these properties in the future? Can one property be sold independent of the other property? So that in the future, we end up with a utility going between two different persons' property? Is that possible?
I do not know the answer to that question. I just know that when they go to do anything, this will be recorded on each parcel.
Just doesn't affect the deed or the title, doesn't lock, doesn't link the properties?
I do not know the answer to that, I can ask.
Okay, thank you.
That'd be a question for Columbia Township, Commissioner Bear.
Got your own question?
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, be looking for a motion to forward to the full board with recommendation of approval. Moved by Bear. Supported by Williams. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passes unanimously. Takes us to item J, JC dot road signs and posts.
So this is our typical bid for our road signs. We're asking to approve it to two different vendors, Michigan State Industries and MD Solutions, for not to exceed $175,000 total between the two. We rode in there, there was five bidders, but the low bidder for the majority of the items was Michigan State Industries. And then there was a few, the 90-degree U-channel caps, flat cross brackets, cross brackets in galvanized signposts, where low bid was the MD Solutions, so we're asking to award based on those low bids.
Committee members, any questions? Seeing none, be looking for a motion to forward to the full board with recommendation of approval. Moved by Bear.
Support.
Supported by Williams. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passes unanimously. That takes us to item K, financial report for JC dot second quarter 2025. Good morning, Cecilia.
Good morning. So I am here to go over and answer any questions that you may have regarding JC dot second quarter financial report. Just looking through it, there isn't anything that is standing out as a concern at this time. In fact, there's even a small amount that's an increase to fund balance of $26,000. Is there any questions?
Committee members, any questions? Seeing none, I'd be looking for a motion to receive the report.
Will move.
Moved by Bear.
Support.
Supported by Walls. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you, Cecilia. Takes us to item L, the monthly report.
All right, so our monthly report has our grant projects first. The county farm, Palaski Road project is complete. The next slide is the Mike Levine Trail, that project, the boardwalks and the, they're pouring the foundations. They're, the boardwalks are complete and they're pouring foundations for the pedestrian bridge. We're prepared for concrete to start being poured the week of the 18th on Lansing and Parnell for the medians. We did the paving for the force account chip seal on Clinton Way, and I believe they are starting the chip seal today. Our crews are doing the chip seal on Clinton Way. Then we get to our urban paving project that was awarded to Michigan Paving. All the paving is complete, and we've got some shoulder work and guard rail to do to complete that project. Our Sutton Road, Wildwood paving, the paving is complete on Sutton, and Wildwood is scheduled to be done late August. Our mumble strips are completed on Norville and Springport Road, scheduling our Moscow County Farm and South Street in Michigan Ave rumble strips, or mumble strips, sorry, to be completed soon. Then we get into our local projects. We have the 64 miles of projects this year, and we just highlight a few of them that are complete. When you get to the Blackman map there, we have the pictures of our Colton Place Recycling that we did on Blake Road two weeks ago, I think. And then Crush and Shape was River Street that's paved there in that picture. Then we just go through the different townships with updates and pictures of the status of the projects. Then I get to the maintenance Q Alert summaries. There's our Q Alert summary for the year as of the end of July. We're at 3,450 total for the year. The patching slide has our patching material total for July at 427.72 tons for the year. We could have paved 2.86 total miles of road. And then the paper patching pictures are in there, that was completed, we're done with paper patching for the year. Then we get to our permits for July. We had 53 oversized seasonal permits, 158 right-of-way permits, and 82 inspections for soil erosion.
Committee members, any questions? Commissioner Bear?
Thank you, Chairman. Angie, I did complain many times about Blackman Road, so I'm gonna complain about it, I should also tell you thank you. When I was at the fair this past week, one of my constituents stopped, wanted to talk with me. I haven't had the time to drive out to Palmer Road and look at this myself, but the story I was told was that some of the spring flooding had washed out a ditch which removed the shoulder, the support on Palmer Road. And he said, now the situation is that the asphalt is crumbling down into the void that was washed away. Asphalt's crumbling into the point that the white line has now crumbled and fallen down in. I say I haven't had a chance to drive Palmer Road and verify that myself.
If you give me a location, I can look into it.
Can you have somebody go look?
If you give me the location, I can go look into it, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, Commissioner Pulaski.
Thank you for the courtesy, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to note, Angie, I had a constituent out my way on O'Brien Road who wanted a driveway done a particular way, and it wasn't consistent with JC DOT's policies. But JC DOT went and visited with the fellow, and they arrived at a solution that he thought was actually even better than he had originally wanted. So I want to tell you, he was very pleased and impressed with your responsiveness, and the outcome was apparently to everyone's satisfaction. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Thanks, and I'll just add the work on Sutton Road, not only this year, but the work you did a couple years ago. I appreciate it, and I'm sure the students at East Jackson High School do, too, because there's heavy traffic through that area, and it was in bad, bad shape. So appreciate the team's work prior to this and then doing the final work now. If there's no other questions or comments, I'd be looking to receive the report.
Will move.
Moved by Bear.
Forward.
Supported by Williams. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passes unanimously. Thanks, have a great day.
Thank you, you, too.
Takes us to item 5A, be looking for a motion to pay the claims. Moved by Williams, supported by Bear. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, that passes unanimously. Other minutes, there are none. Reporting schedule for September will be the youth center, friend of the court, airport, animal shelter, emergency management. That takes us to the second opportunity for public comment. Do either of you have a comment? All right, then I'll do away with the three chimes in. Item 7A, committee member comments. Are there any committee member comments? Commissioner Bear.
Anybody's able to make a motion at any time. There's no such thing as a motion that's made that's inappropriate. But if somebody's going to misinterpret Robert's Rules of Order and tell me my motion was somehow out of order or inappropriate, then I'm going to request of you, Chairman Kennedy, when we are discussing things, going through presentations, let me know when the appropriate time has arrived so that I can make a motion. If somebody thinks there's an inappropriate time and appropriate time, please let me know when the time is appropriate so I don't get this bullshit again.
Okay, well, I appreciate your language. That's encouraging. What I was trying to point out to you was that the administrator had some information that would have been useful before you made the motion. It's not that you were out of order, Tony. It was, I knew you would not garner support. I was trying to help you, but, you know, you press forward. So if you let everybody that wants to put information into it before you chime out a motion, sometimes you'll have a better chance of garnering support from others, your colleagues. That's all it is. And then as far as the record goes, again, it wasn't that your motion was out of order. It was it lacked garnering support, so it doesn't get put in the record. Okay?
Or it can be by request.
Okay.
Because another feature of that is, I remember years back, a former commissioner making extensive comments during Commissioner Comment time. Before he would start, he would make a request, "I request that my comments be put in the minutes." And so there'd be sometimes a page of comments, and they were put in the minutes because that commissioner requested it.
That's supposed to be with a motion support and board approval for that. I can't remember. I know, I remember what you're talking about. I don't remember if that process was followed or not, but...
I'm just looking for some fair play.
I understand. Hopefully, you heard what I told you about today. I was trying to allow the administrator to chime in, so you could have had some more information before you put out a motion on the floor.
So if a motion, if an issue comes around that everybody likes, as soon as it comes up, I can make a motion to approve it.
Yeah.
And everybody loves it.
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
I can wait for your answer.
Commissioner Williams.
Although I can appreciate the conversation, although I do believe that at this point we've exceeded comments, and it's kind of turning into a conversation.
I would agree. Everybody's had their opportunity, except for Commissioner Walls, if she would like to...
Look at her.
I didn't think so. Very elegant. All right. Let's take a look there. Committee comments done.